I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. With that, I'll call to order the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Can everybody please stand for the pledge?
Which leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I've got an addition. I think Kevin's got an addition too. I'll let him put his first.
We'll just call it four B, and that would be a proposed change to an ordinance, city ordinance.
And the one I've got is under eight point O, department reports. It'd be eight point O G three, Highway sixty-five corridor improvement letter of support. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. With the two additions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Presentations. We have a public hearing for forty-five eighty-four, two hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue. Partial vacation of Drainage and Utilities from Oak Meadows Estates. Jack?
Thank you, Tim. The property owner at forty-five eighty-four, two hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue is in the process of constructing a new single-family residence and is requesting a partial vacation of the easement in order to install a septic system on the westerly portion of the property. The easterly portion of the property is partially wetland and thus limiting the ability to place the septic system in relationship to the new residence. In nineteen seventy-five, as part of the preliminary plat process of the Oak Meadows Estate subdivision, the city engineer recommended easements for future streets be included in the plat. The easements in the recommendation were defined as the area of the abutting lots and that the center line of the street be the lot line between the two lots and that a thirty-three-foot-wide drainage unit be provided off both of the lots, making a total width of sixty-six feet, and that further a quick claim deed be executed in the name of the city to cover the road easement along thirty-three feet of each lot abutting the future street. In April nineteen seventy-eight, the final plat of Oak Meadows Estate was recorded and is included as attachment three for your review. As part of the recorded final plat in nineteen seventy-eight, ten fifty-eight-foot-wide drainage and utility easements were recorded on abutting lots throughout the subdivision, creating a total of five one-hundred-and-sixteen-feet-wide drainage and utility easements. No quick claim deeds can be located for any of these parcels. Although drainage and utility easement widths can vary from one subdivision to the next based on the uniqueness of the topography, drainage structures, and construction of ditches, the standard easement in rural residential zones is a ten-foot width on abutting properties, creating a total twenty-foot width easement. Additionally, the current residential road standard in East Bethel would call for a total of sixty-six feet of right-of-way, matching the recommendation of the city engineer in nineteen seventy-five. A parcel of land abutting the south lot line of forty-five forty-eight, two hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue Northeast is a portion of the eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine-point-nine-acre Gordy Mickelson Wildlife Management Area. The city has no future plans to construct a future road in this easement, and there are no existing connector streets south this subdivision. The Minnesota DNR Land and Minerals Division was contacted, and without any recorded easement documents or quick claim deeds, they have declined to provide any comment. The opinion of the East Bethel City Attorney is that the inclusion of the drainage and utility easement on the recorded plat may get a valid easement. The city engineer and public works director have reviewed the request to propose the vacation of a portion of the drainage and utility easement described and shown on attachment five. The staff is requesting that city council hold a public hearing and consider the approval to vacate a portion of the drainage and utility easement located at forty-five forty-eight, two hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue Northeast with the condition set forth in attached resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. This time, I'd recommend that the city council open the public hearing on this matter.
With that, I'll open a public hearing for forty-five forty-eight, two hundred and twenty-fourth. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak? You want to come up to the podium, please? Could you state your name and address for the records?
Yeah, Kevin Hallam, forty-five fifty-six, two hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue. And my concern is, if you give him down to ten, I still got fifty-eight feet easement. So I want to go down to ten also. Or anything that comes in there, they're just going to put it on my side, which is not right.
Okay.
So are you on the lot to the west?
To the west, yeah.
Okay.
We both have fifty-eight feet now. See, what I'm concerned, you give him ten, then my fifty-eight's still there. Well, where are they going to put anything? They're going to take my property. And I don't appreciate that after thirty-four years of being there. I went and got an application for it, but I just want to know if that's going to happen or...
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend that the council doesn't have the authority to make any sort of determination on Mr. Hallam's easement at this point. I mean, if he wants to apply for that vacation, he certainly can do so. But, you know, to do a vacation requires a public hearing and a public notice published in advance of a public hearing. And so it all needs to be done in writing and with enough advance notice to publish those issues in the paper and whatnot, so...
Would that satisfy you, come in and get you going with the paperwork?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if twenty-three feet of easement's going to satisfy, you know?
Could you repeat that? I didn't understand what you just said.
I'm just wondering if they do it and they get twenty feet of easement, ten on his, ten on mine, if that's going to satisfy him or they're just going to tell me I'm out of luck.
Aaron, do you know anything about...
I do. As a matter of fact, I think in two thousand... It's either two thousand and five or two thousand and nine, the property to the north across two twenty-fourth had their easement vacated as well. Lot nine also had their easement vacated down to ten feet as well, along with the first hundred feet from the right-of-way was also left in for city utility purposes, drainage, those kind of things. So it has been granted in the past, and that's why we're here today for requesting another one. So there are five, actually, there are ten easements throughout this twenty parcel subdivision that are all fifty-eight feet wide. So I'm assuming we'll hear more from other neighbors who are interested in having their easements vacated as well, like the gentleman here at the podium who did stop by, and he was the only person we had that called and/or stopped in and asked, and he was provided an application to request the vacation of his side of the easement as well. According to our city engineer and public works director, a ten-foot easement on each side of the property line is sufficient in our rural residential zones. That's what we would plat now.
Okay. So he can come in and see you then about...
That is correct, or he can fill out the application that I've already provided him, and we'll move it forward just like this.
Jack, would, seeing as how with this development, the purpose of the easements were to facilitate future road expansion and as I'm kind of seeing on the top of graphical map, that there probably is not going to be any. If Kevin here would like to do his, can we send a letter out to the other neighbors that have this easement on their property and ask if they are interested in vacating that? And then we could kind of get this done all at once?
I don't see why not. Again, they would have to be individual requests for the vacation on their properties. But as it said in the report, and I think that Aaron mentioned also, the property to the north is DNR property. So this easement going up here and the one to the west of here going north provides access to nothing. And the one in Allison to the south, so there's going to be no streets there unless the DNR decides to give us several hundred acres of land.
Yep, and the other area around there is already built up with acreage lots that I would not foresee anything happening with for a very long time.
And for further clarification, Councilman Mundell, every property within twelve-hundred-and-fifty feet of this address did receive a notice about tonight's hearing. So those folks also, throughout the development, that have the drainage and utility easement in their yards also got the notice, so...
Yep. I'm just wondering if it'd make it simpler and easier just to...
Just get everybody in, send them a letter and get it all done at once.
Yeah.
One at a time, but get it done.
Yeah.
And that there may actually be people who don't even realize that their property is overlaid by a fifty-eight-foot easement on one of their sidelines.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to come up and talk? Well, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Is there a motion on this?
Let's see. Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, resolution granting the vacation of a portion of a drainage and utility easement at forty-five eighty-four, two twenty-fourth Avenue Northeast as located on the survey.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second discussion. So the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Kevin?
Okay, not surprisingly, because of some recent actions by the city council, there's been some blowback or concerns raised by people. And when we were deciding regarding specifically, it was on the EDA matter, the Economic Development Authority appointment, and our city attorney, Kevin, right over there, is it Sandstrom?
Sandstrom, correct.
Okay. Correctly said that the existing ordinance was vague, but that we could, you know, city council can do whatever it wants, and that's why we acted. And I don't know if we jumped the gun or not, but it got me to looking at the city ordinance as I'm reading them, and it was vague. You know, we think of committees submitting appointments as being the norm. Listen to what it actually says in the old ordinance. First of all, "All committee and commission members shall serve in an advisory capacity to the council." "Appointments shall be offered by the mayor and confirmed by the council." "Commission members shall serve staggered terms of three years and may be removed by a majority vote of the full city council." "Committees composed of two council persons shall serve terms of one year," not six years like on the EDA. Interesting, but that's the way it was when I read it, and I thought, well, that seems unusual. So I proposed a change to the ordinance to, I think, make it more accurate of what actually is being done. And I've submitted it to Jack, and he's talked to Mr. Sandstrom about it, and we're pretty much there. Here's a proposed new version of it. "All board, committee, authority, and commission members shall serve in an advisory capacity to the council." "Appointments shall be offered to the council by the relevant body." Okay, so the planning commission submits proposed appointments, the EDA submits. So we're codifying that that's the way we're going to do it. Okay, that's fine. It's not a power grab by the city council or something. It'll be submitted by the relevant body after public posting of the vacancy and interviews of all applicants. And I put the "all" in there because nobody probably knows this, but I applied for the city, for the planning commission about two years ago, a year and a half ago. I never even got an interview. And earlier in my life, I was director of corporate planning for a two-point-six-billion-dollar corporation. So I know a little bit about the subject. And so this picking and choosing who gets interviews and not, that stuff's got to end. Anybody who applies gets an interview. And it also includes verification of their residency. According to the ordinances of the city of East Bethel, to be on the city council, to be on a commission, to be on a committee, to be on an authority, to be on a board, you have to actually be a resident here. And just as a side thing, there are different ways of determining residency, but in Minnesota, under the law, proof of residency is one of these three things. A valid, unexpired Minnesota driver's license or instruction permit. Number two, a valid, unexpired Minnesota ID card. Or number three, a home utility services bill issued no more than twelve months before presentation. Okay? So to have all applicants interviewed and verification of residency seemed very relevant to the rest of the code. After which, the council will approve or reject the proposed appointment at its discretion. In the event of rejection of a recommended appointment, the council may return the matter to the relevant body, send it back to them and say, you know, try again. For further consideration and recommendation, may appoint one of the applicants who was not interviewed, who was interviewed, or appoint another if there are no applicants remaining from the interview pool at its discretion. The point being that we needed to clean up the code. I'm sure it's not the end of this. I'm sure there's a lot of things we'll have to clean up in the code, just so it makes sense, you know, to the way things we're doing things now. But ultimately, the people in the city council are the ones held responsible for the decisions. It is our prerogative to decide who's going to be our advisors. We want the best advisors we can get. Doesn't matter if they agree with us on political matters or anything else. We just want the best advice we can get. And so it has to be within our control who we appoint or don't appoint. Okay? That's the point of the changes in that. And I just wanted to bring that up now because I imagine there's at least one person here who wants to address recent actions. And so it just provides some context. We recognize that the code was vague. It needed to be cleaned up. I took it upon myself with the help of these two gentlemen and Jack to try to make it make more sense. And that's where we stand. It'll be out for public notice and all that kind of thing. Okay?
Jack, do we want a motion for that or...
No, there's no...
Information only.
Okay, information, okay. Okay. Thank you. Moving on, five point O, public forum. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has rules of conduct for the public forum. The procedural ones we went over last time, we went over all of them the last time, but the one that I want to go over before we open the public forum tonight is, "The public forum provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items which are not on the agenda." "The public forum may not be used to make personal attacks, to air personality grievances, make political endorsements, or for political campaign purposes." "The council will listen to the issue but will not engage in dialogue with the presenter." "Questions from the council will be for clarification only." "The public forum will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but rather for hearing the resident property owner for informational purposes only." "If the majority of the council would like to address the issue in more detail, it can be added to the agenda or can be addressed during their regular agenda of a future meeting or referred to staff for further review and response."
With that, I'll open the public forum. We've got quite a few on here tonight, so we're going to kind of hold you to three minutes. And we'll start out with Christine Dolman.
Christine Dolman, I live at one-four-five, one-four-five-zero, Highway sixty-five. Yes, I live in Ham Lake. I'm here on behalf of Gail Murphy, who is not back from Mexico yet. First thing I want to say is we want to know what's going on with the investigation. We made some serious strong allegations against Nick for lying on the affidavit and Jack for lying to the inspector. You hired an independent inspector, who then Jack emailed and said, "We need to change. Can you add some things?" And I find it interesting because you were really hell-bent on this property being a rental property. And I finally said, "Why?" You did not even have a rental ordinance at the time this started. Next thing you know, the mayor says, "Doesn't matter that it's a rental property. It has nothing to do with it." So then my question is, who is it that instructed Andy Schrader, on his second report, to add that Ms. Murphy supposedly said this property is currently not being rented because it is not on the body cam footage? Ms. Murphy never said that. These are strong allegations against Jack and Nick. And now you expect her to meet with Jack alone in a restricted meeting, as Jack said, for her and a family member? She would love to sit down and meet with the city, but she is not going to meet with Jack and Nick alone. The last time she tried to meet with Jack, he yelled at her, had her in tears. That is not productive for anybody. I submitted an entire packet of every wrongdoing in this incident, from where the city says this property was closed. Everything was closed. You made up dates to go after her in court. You dropped all the charges against her, dismissed three days before court, and instructed the Anoka County deputy to go onto private property. And I have the emails, and those are in that packet. For you three council members, the date that I spoke was October twenty-fourth. And it's in your minutes where it says, "Asked that this be filed as an official complaint." We are now four months in. What's going on with the complaint? And who investigates when somebody complains about your inspectors and your city administrator? Nobody, because that's what's happening here. Nobody. This needs to stop. Now they're going after her on a sewer for her rental property, where we have from the audio phone call from the sewer inspector guy said, "This isn't a failed system." Yet now all of a sudden, it's a failed system? Jack, she was supposed to, you were going to talk to Nick and get back to her. She hasn't heard a word. Not a word. It is like retaliation after retaliation after retaliation. And all she's trying to do is comply. She has submitted inspection reports. She had submitted... You know what? One of you guys need to sit down with us and go through these documents. And when you see what we saw, you might come to a different conclusion. And I'm going to say one thing about the EDA, because your city attorney read the policy, because that's what they're accusing you of, being violation of the policy. EDA isn't even on the policy. Read the first two sentences.
Next, Suzanne Urkel.
Good evening. I'm here to address that last week, or the last council meeting, when the mayor accused me of being anti-business, when the mayor actually voted himself, voted to close multiple businesses in the city by not approving variances for them. And the businesses he talked about got the variances approved. I just want to clarify why I voted against these developers. I voted against the first one because there was incorrect paperwork, documents, numbers from the engineers. It was wrong, and we should not, I still think the council should not have went ahead with it until those engineered numbers got corrected. The second time I voted against a developer, a business, was because they wanted to put six houses on a cul-de-sac, and I thought it was too much. And if you haven't been up there and looked after this last snow, it was kind of a mess. And then the third time I voted against a big, huge developer, what you call the business, was the rental townhomes that are coming in, elevage. I still feel that is not the character of East Bethel. And I believe that the homes for sale would have been a much better fit for East Bethel. And that's why I voted against them. It was my opinion. And then I'm a small business owner, so I would never be anti-business. But I am anti-businesses that are doing things wrong. And then finally, I want to say, there was a letter sent to many people in this city regarding me, a legal transaction that I did in two thousand and eight, trying to find more dirt on me, more dirt, two thousand and eight, a legal transaction. I could have sent letters out from people who have been on these commissions for arrests they've had, DUIs they've had. I would never sink that low. And for whoever did that, I think that was just evil. And that's all I've got to say.
Jesse Omen.
Hi, my name is Jessica Omen. I am a resident. I live at four-four-two-seven, or four-four-seven-four, Two Hundredth Lane Northeast. I was, the applicant that applied, interviewed for the economic development position. At the last city council meeting, the city council denied unanimous vote from that committee. I was rejected for the appointment, and I am puzzled and confused as to why I was deemed not fit for that position. The city council members that did not vote for me did not interview me. They did not ask me my questions of my experience, qualifications, or the value that I could have brought to that committee. I am confused on the criteria that the city council members use to make their decision. And I am also very saddened that they did not respect the committee in their decision to vote me through unanimously. I am bewildered at why the established procedures that are set up were not followed by the city council. When I was not approved, instead of sending it back to the committee for new applicants or current applicants to be re-interviewed, they decided to vote me out and somebody else, and stating various reasons. Again, I believe the members of the Economic Development Advisory Committee were slighted by the city council because of that decision. In the future, I would hope, or I would hate, to have other applicants in my position to be given a fair opportunity, which was denied to me, to engage in their civic duties. I also believe that established procedures and processes should be followed. The city council should work with their fellow community members. In the future, I hope that the city council will be limiting. I know the city council will be limiting and losing opportunity and denying other individuals that opportunity that can make a difference in the city of East Bethel. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Julie Lux.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Julie Lux, two-four-two-two-zero, Skylark Drive. I've been a member of the EDA since 2012, and I'm the current chair. We've lived in East Bethel for twenty-five years. I love this city, and I'm committed to carrying out my oath to serve on the EDA. I feel we need to move forward and move past this drama that we've had in the past several months. Excuse me. The EDA truly made their best recommendation on who we thought would be the most appropriate candidate to support the city's goals, based on a myriad of different things. I understand that city council had a different opinion and will most likely not move forward with our recommendation. This is disappointing, but we, as a commission, we're committed to moving forward in good faith. We're part of the team, so we're just going to move on. We're a hard-working commission that has accomplished many great things over the past ten years, including the Business Retention Program, East Bethel Jobs website, and our work in expanding broadband to make sure our businesses and citizens have acceptable bandwidth for work and school and business tasks. So the main goal of economic development is improving the economic well-being of a community through efforts that entail job creation, job retention, tax base enhancements, and quality of life. So our goal is to promote business expansion and retention, and this often takes investment on the part of the city. So everyone on the EDA commission needs to be willing and able to understand the tools that we work with, such as tax increment financing, or TIF. So this can help us encourage certain types of developments or redevelopment that would not normally occur without assistance. So due to the rising cost of capital and construction costs, it's often not feasible for these projects to move forward without assistance. So I've watched some past city meetings and comments like, "Why aren't they using their own money?" just demonstrates a lack of understanding of this tool. To have a nay vote on something just because it's going to cost money is not helpful. So I think it's really important to expand our commercial and industrial tax base because it shifts the burden of taxes away from the residential classification. So right now, we're probably close to eighty percent of the tax base being residential, the taxes being paid by the residential population. So this is because our commercial and tax industrial classifications pay... So this is because our commercial and tax industrial classifications pay twice as much of the assessed value as a, as a residential. So it's gonna be important for us to grow business, expand business, to help ease the burden on the residential taxpayer. So this is, and this is pretty common throughout most communities. Lastly, my work in pre-development brings me in contact with many developers and people associated with other cities across the twin cities. And some of the perceptions of our city have not and are not favorable. I would love for us to be known, not known as the city who spends an inordinate, or has spent an inordinate amount of time on issues such as dogs and animal control contracts. So let's get back to business, focusing on the issues that keep East Bethel a great place to live and work and do business. Thank you.
Thank you Julie.
Could I ask, could I ask our attorney a question? In looking through the city code, I was surprised that there was no mention in it of an economic development authority. I couldn't find a single reference to an economic development authority. What, how is it set up? Is it, is it some other thing under the law than municipal code or?
Yeah, this, uh, state statute will allow a, a city to create an economic, economic development authority.
Okay, thanks. I was just wondering about that.
And they have their own bylaws too. That's mandated by state statutes.
Thank you.
Dave Creppis.
Dave Creppis, two, three, zero, five, zero, Gulf Drive. I'm speaking tonight about business and the protections they have against unauthorized inspections by unauthorized personnel for alleged allegations without evidence, formal complaints from neighbors or customers. Regardless of the situation, anything that happened discussed previously or had been going on is no excuse for unauthorized inspection and to misuse of city's resources and police protection. July ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and city council members Urkel, Beck, and Jim Smith from planning commission went to conduct an inspection of an East Bethel home business without any authorization, discussion with council, or discussion with staff who were charged and employed to do these things. Even worse, these council members had two Anoka County sheriff deputies accompany them. Talk about misuse and abuse of city resources and tax money that is wrong. These deputies were taken off the streets during busiest time of the day, Friday at four thirty. Sheriff's report, Ms. Urkel requested a domestic escort to the address to inspect the property for complaints that the city of East Bethel has about Ms. Gimble's business. Deputy advised this was an odd request. Beck and Urkel said they were on city council and the contact, the contract that Gimble has with the city regarding animal control allows them to inspect her property at any time. They were with another gentleman that was not identified, but stated he worked for the city of East Bethel. That was Jim Smith. Sheriff advised all three that usually animal abuse complaints go through the sheriff's office and then they would investigate them, not city council members. July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, public forum, Jim Smith spoke about the incident at Gratitude Farms IUP. He confirmed he did accompany two council members to inspect the business to see if it was in compliance. Basically, since, since the owner denied access, the IUP should be canceled. He shared his inspection of North Metro Animal Care when he was allowed to see everything. Once again, Smith showed he acted as an inspector. July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, city council meeting. Motion approved to sentence Urkel and Beck for their actions on July ninth for unauthorized inspection and misuse of the city's resources and police protection. Also, Jim Smith was removed from planning commission effective immediately. Boss stated the IUP not give them permission. He noted the IUP stated authorized personnel. He stated a council member was not authorized to go and walk into any business to ensure they are doing everything right. I urge all residents to read and view July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, council meeting minutes. And Urkel admitted she has shown up at several businesses saying she was there to inspect as a councilperson. Looking at a business is different. Also showing up with the Anoka County sheriff is a completely different story. Council members are not inspectors. The city has staff and processes. Where former mayor Voss noted they were getting a lot of questions from the business community asking if this was how the city operated. He stated this was the third time in six months where there had been issues of actions that have been anti-business by Ms. Urkel. The business community was concerned about this. He indicated he would also be concerned for anyone who has an IUP about Beck and or Urkel thinking they can show up at any time. Even though there had been an ongoing history for this business and its IUP and controversy on social media, that is no excuse for taking matters into their own hands. There is a legal process to be followed. Every resident in private business should not have to be afraid that a rogue council member, a member of our advisory committees would act on rumors and come knocking on your door with deputies wanting to get in to see what's going on with no evidence whatsoever. Per the council meeting, I referred, Urkel and Beck both admitted to doing just that. Both show disregard for center. Urkel called it a badge of honor during the later meeting when she was officially censored. I am surprised and do not understand why there was no legal action taken against East Bethel for their unauthorized access to Gratitude Farms on July ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Based on these facts and Ms. Urkel's history, she should be removed from EDA. Thank you.
Karen Creppis.
Karen Creppis, two, three, zero, five, zero, Gulf Drive northeast. I wanted to start tonight with sharing a bright idea. I put some things outside the door. I don't know if anybody out here is familiar with QR codes, but it's a great way to share a quick link to open a website. So I think it'd be awesome if the city posted these on council and various meetings. If you scan the QR code, it will pull up a PDF of the full packet of tonight's meeting from the city website. There's one over there and I'll pass it around if anyone's interested. I want to speak a little bit about, again, not to beat a dead horse on this EDA thing, but there's been a lot of talk on resumes. And any professional recruiter would tell you that all a resume does is get you in the door. And it's really the interview that matters and what it is that you say. And I attended the EDA meeting when there was an interview. And I just wanted to speak to some of the things that I had heard. And Ms. Urkel, having been on council for four years, I expected that she would have known more about the EDA and what they did. In my opinion, she demonstrated she did not know what the EDA does or has based on the questions she asked and how she responded to the questions. One of the questions was, what issues are you most interested in pursuing or promoting? Ms. Urkel responded, building positive business environment and building relationships with our current businesses. I don't know what the organization does a lot of outside of the golf tournament. Seeking out businesses residents want here, not just willy-nilly, oh, this business is going here, like retail and interesting stuff like restaurants. After that response, the EDA shared again about the business retention program and expansion. It just seemed like she had zero knowledge about the EDA. So again, for someone that had been in council for four years, I would have expected more. So if she's coming to say she's more qualified, she should have known more. And for that reason, I say that Jessica Omen is just as qualified, if not more than Suzanne Urkel, to fill that seat on EDA. And the reasons I say that is some of the things that she said. In fact, one of the most important questions I thought the EDA asked was, what strengths and abilities do you bring? And Jessica shared that she has the strong skills of developer of people and issues. She further shared that she actually was part of a lobbying group that went to Washington DC and got a congressional faces and said, hey, your constituents need your help. And due to her help and her group, they actually helped make some changes, which is quite positive. And I thought that was quite impressive. It's not just enough to say that, hey, I'm a networker and I can network. EDA needs more than just people who say they're likable and can be networking. They need people that can help develop and keep what it is that we have. Finally, Jessica asked to the EDA, well, why would you want me? And the EDA members again all stated how the position does not necessarily require your business experience. It's the skills that matter the most and a willingness to be open, to learn, to be engaged, to not have an agenda. And that is how you can achieve great things. So I disagree with council's decision to appoint Ms. Urkel over EDA's unanimous choice for Jessica. It appears that you rendered our boards useless because in the end, if you feel otherwise, you're gonna make some other decisions. So I guess I am a little frustrated with the transparency in that. And finally, just one quick thing, I attended the work meeting last Monday. And after hearing compliments of the city on their website, I found it a bit surprising that Mr. Lewis was asking for the city to put together some training videos for residents on how to navigate our website. So if anyone needs to know, check with your local library. They have all kinds of free classes to help you learn technology for computers and your smartphone. Thank you.
Now with that, I'll close the public forum. Move on to item number six point zero, the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve item six point zero.
Motion made second. All second.
I'd like to pull item A.
Item A.
And item I. Excuse me, H I J, J. Looks like an item A.
H I J K?
It's J.
Just J?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
I wanna pull I and H.
I and H?
And B.
I, H. And G is in George?
No, B.
B, B is in boy. Is that it? With the remaining ones, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The remaining items pass. Kevin, you're item A.
Okay, that's the approved, approved bills list. That's how it's written down. And it really just is two things. One is, uh, and I don't have a deep understanding of workman's comp. But I see eight different entries. And a part of this is informational too, for anybody who watches these videos on YouTube or the city media center, the city website on the media center, or share with other people, but just interesting things about what it costs to run a city. There are eight entries totaling eighty-nine, approximately eighty-nine thousand dollars for workman's comp premiums, which is paid to the league of Minnesota cities. And can you help, just help me understand, assume everybody else knows it and I don't. But is that for a quarter? Is that for a year?
That's for a year, yes.
And almost half of that was for the fire department?
That's correct. Forty thousand dollars for the fire department.
Okay. And the other thing is in legal, legal expenses totaled about twelve thousand, six hundred. And I'm just wondering, is it, is it feasible without making a big problem for anybody? Is it feasible to know how much is the retainer versus how much is, uh, say attributable to elevage project or this project or that project?
Now, we, we can break the civil out. The civil is by the hour, which is this bill this month, I believe is about thirty-one hundred dollars.
And the two, the two are civil or prosecuting?
The civil and, and the prosecution side of it. The prosecution's a flat fee, so.
That's the retainer?
Well, if you wanna call it a retainer, but it's essentially a flat fee for their services. No matter how many cases they prosecute, the fee stays the same. But the civil is based on hourly charge and it's based on each individual item. I think in this month's bill, it's thirty-one hundred dollars. Approximately nine hundred is that, or related to planning type activities, escrow stuff that the city attorney consults on, which we take out of funds that are already there to pay the attorney back. It's just charged here and then it's charged back to those escrow funds and paid back to the city. The other twenty-two was like for general matters, preparation for meetings, meetings, and one other thing that I don't recall.
Well, what, what do you think would be most informative for us? Would it be to break it out, like how much is attributed to one project or another? Or just civil, civil versus flat fee?
I, I, I could, they, they give us a break, they give us a break.
I don't have an opinion about it.
They give us a breakout on the bill. If you'd like to see the civil bill, we'll just include that in the package.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you. With, with that, I'll, uh, motion we approve item A.
Second.
Motion made second and discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Jim, item B.
Item B, page thirty-seven, Jack, at the bottom. There it says Lewis agreed with Miller. It should say Smith.
Okay.
Jim, can you speak into your microphone?
Page thirty-seven, at the bottom, it says Lewis agreed with Miller. It should say Smith. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So you wanna make a note of that or fix it? Send me an email?
We'll put it, it'll be in the minute once.
Okay.
We'll send you the copy of that.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve item B, corrected.
Motion made second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. And Jim, you got item H?
I got H and I, actually they're together kinda. I haven't, I didn't have any time to check any of that out. I don't know if anybody else did before we approve replacing this broom or whatever it is. Did anybody get a chance to check any of that? I mean, I'd like to table that until I have a chance to look at it, if that's all right.
Is there any information I can give you?
How much is it?
It says it's thirteen thousand dollars.
On I?
I is the, um.
Truck mounted broom?
Yes.
That's thirteen.
Thirteen thousand, four seventy-nine, twenty-five.
So this, this thing is shot then or what?
Well, yeah, it's a nineteen eighty-nine model, so after about thirty-three years, it's pretty well, we've pretty well got our money's worth out of it.
Bristles are like half an inch long, is that? Scraping more than you're brushing?
It's not the bristles, it's the frame and the hydraulic connections and everything else, so.
So then H and I basically are together?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve H and I.
Motion made second.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, H and I pass. And Kevin, you got G?
Yeah, it's regarding a public works employee, again, in the interest of information for the citizens. First of all, it's referred to as a grade five step A job. I repeatedly appeared at that very podium right there as a private citizen and said, where did the tables that you guys use for, paid, these things right here, I know you can't see them. But in, in page, about page fourteen or so of the budget, it has two tables, one for, dang it, one for hourly, one for salary or annual. And it has grades and steps. And I, I asked, I asked what I thought was a very simple question. Where did that thing come from? Because everybody around here treats it like it's the Rosetta Stone or something. And nobody has ever been able to tell me where these come from. I have a, I have a sneaking suspicion where it came from, but I can't prove that. And it's, it relates to an old administrative way in the past. But just, just to put things in context, and I'm, I'm happy for this person. But this person is gonna be a public works maintenance technician. Jack, you were, you were head of the public works, weren't you?
Yes, at one time.
Couple, couple decades ago? No, I'm kidding.
Pretty close.
Pretty close, with twelve to fifteen years ago. What, what's the main work of a public works maintenance technician?
Well, everybody's classified the same with the exception of two positions.
I mean, what would the job normally include?
Snow plowing, mowing grass, maintenance on trucks, parks maintenance. Everything we do under the realm of public work, street sweeping.
All right.
Asphalt patching, you know.
Okay, well, just basically because, you know, unless you look at the budgets, which I have a peculiar obsession with doing, you may not know some of the numbers. And again, I'm happy for the person because this is, this is, uh, this is good for them. The, uh, based on two hundred and sixty days a year, which is basically fifty-two five-day weeks, you know? Eight hours a day and twenty-four sixty-one, the, the pay rate, the base pay will be fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And that's without any overtime. And then in the city, they have what they call a cafeteria plan, which in private business, what the cafeteria plan normally is, is it's a negotiation. You take a little bit lower salary and, and the company kicks in some of your salary toward being able to buy benefits on your own. Uh, but the, there's a flat fee of fourteen hundred and twenty-five dollars a month per city employee. That's seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars a year to buy health insurance, to put into your health savings account, stuff like that. So it's a considerable sum. Bottom line is that, that job's gonna pay over sixty-eight thousand dollars without any overtime. And so I just, I just, for the sake of the residents of the city, wondering why bills or budgets and all or where they are. that's why. It costs a lot of money to hire people and, and provide the benefits that we provide. So as information only, uh, I have one question I want to ask. And, and I'm doing it on the public record. Everybody's familiar with racism and sexism, there's another ism that goes on a lot. And it's called nepotism. And that's people in a position of power or influence giving favor to those who are relatives, friends, et cetera. And I just want to know, is there any nepotism involved in this at all, or was that person absolutely the best candidate?
He was the best candidate, there's no nepotism.
Alright, that's all I wanted to know. Because we get, well, that's what our interest is, if we're gonna pay this well, we definitely want the best people we can get, you know?
And ju- just emphasize that, Kevin, this position was advertised once.
Yeah, I know, had twenty-one applicants or something, yeah.
Well, we had total twenty-one counting both in, in application periods. And the first time, we didn't get any candidates that we felt were qualified, so we did the second time. Uh, one other thing about this candidate, he, he does have HVAC experience, which is very useful in working on stuff here. And he also has ice arena experience.
He has what?
Ice arena, he knows how to run Zambonis and do things over there in case he's ever.
Well, that's great, because our interest is to get the best people we can get, so that's great. And I'm not intimating anything by asking the question, it's just a question that needs to be asked. Oh, with that, I'll propose we pass, I'll make a motion to pass, uh, to approve item J, excuse me, for stumbling over my own tongue.
A second.
Motion made second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Seven point oh, new business. A one, variance request detached accessory structure, one nine five five eight Jefferson Street Northeast.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, give me one second to get to the right page. You do have the information in your packet, but I want the public to be able to see what we've got going. Two more pages here. Alright, um, the city has received an application for a variance request for a detached accessory structure placement nearer the front property lot line than the primary structure at nineteen five five eight Jefferson Street Northeast. This property is located in the city's rural residential zoning district, and is located within the Wagaman Woods subdivision. The property owner is requesting a variance for the placement of a detached accessory structure closer to the street than his primary residence or primary structure. According to the East Bethel zoning appendix A, general regulations, uh, twelve, excuse me, fourteen dash two point F states that no accessory building or detached private garage shall be located nearer the front lot line than the principal building, except for when the lot is three acres or greater, and the existing principal building is located a minimum of two hundred feet from the said lot line. Then the accessory building or detached private garage may be located closer to the front lot line than the principal dwelling, but not closer than fifty percent of the principal dwelling setback. This property is two point zero one acres, with the primary structure setback approximately a hundred and thirty-five feet from the front lot line. This request does not meet the criteria set forth to allow the structure to be placed closer to the road, so a variance would be required for placement of a detached accessory structure. A consideration of a variance requires the planning commission and the council to consider a three-factor test of practical difficulty. The first factor, a test of reasonableness, means that the landowner would likely use this property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. It does not mean that the land cannot be put to any reasonable use whatsoever without the variance. So for example, if the variance application is for a building too close to the lot line or does not meet the required setback, the first focus of the, first focus factor is whether the request to place a building there is reasonable. In this case, the property owner is requesting a variance to build a detached accessory structure in which he may keep vehicles, boats, classic cars, and other general storage. This use is listed as an accessory use in the zoning code in the rural residential family zoning district. The second factor is, is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances uniquely to the property and not caused by the landowner himself. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of the particular piece of property, that is, to the land and not personal characteristics or preferences of the landowner. When considering the variance for a building to encroach or intrude into a setback, the focus of this factor is whether there is anything physically unique about the piece of property, such as sloping topography or other natural features like wetlands or trees. In this case, the property is unique in that it is pie-shaped, which limits the buildable area available to the rear and side yard for new construction. There are topographical challenges limiting the placement and orientation of the newly proposed detached accessory structure. This is a wooded lot with two to four-foot changes in elevation from the front, front lot line to the rear lot line, as demonstrated in attachment three. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure will be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. For example, when thinking about a variance for an encroachment into a setback, the focus is how the particular building will look closer to the lot line, and if that fits with the character of the area. In this case, there are multiple properties in this subdivision with detached accessory structures which are closer to the front lot line of the property than the principal structure. The proposed detached accessory structure will not encroach on any other required setbacks of the property. The construction of a new detached accessory structure will also maintain the character of the neighborhood by providing, uh, the applicant an enclosed structure in which he can store vehicles and screen them from adjacent properties. Also, there are standing tree growth between the proposed detached accessory structure and the front property line, which will screen it from the public roadway, therefore not altering the, the characteristics of this neighborhood. The planning commission held a public hearing on January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three. A neighbor of the applicant spoke in support of his request. The property owner was present and made comments, as well as answered questions by planning commissioners regarding, uh, the use of his current driveway, the future building orientation. And, and the planning commission voted unanimously in favor of the recommendation of approval of this variance request. The planning commission recommends the city council approve the variance request for the placement of a detached accessory structure near to the front lot line than the primary structure, with the conditions written in resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, with the conditions as is written.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion.
I just got one thing, I was out at the property and I took a look at it. And I think it'll be just fine where it's gonna be. He's got, he's got a different type of lot, but there's a lot of woods and stuff, looks good, so I'd say yes. That's it.
So the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Eight point oh, department reports, Public Works, twenty twenty-three class five resurfacing project.
In two thousand and six, the city began a six-year cycle of gravel road resurfacing for the fourteen point five miles of unpaved road within our system. This cycle allows up to five of our thirty-one gravel roads to be overlaid with new material each year of the rotation sequence. Forty thousand dollars is the budget for gravel road resurfacing for twenty twenty-three. The cost for these projects are for material and delivery. The Public Works Department conducts the grading, compaction, and finishing of the material. Prior to the placement of any new class five material, public work staff will reclaim shoulders and reshape the existing road surface. The recommended roads for twenty twenty-three class five resurfacing are two hundred and forty-first Avenue and London Street, which is the red street you see up at the top of the map, Durant Street, which you see over on the upper right-hand side of the map, and Palisade Street, which is off of Klondike. Staff is also recommending an application of chloride to Klondike Drive. Based on previous year's bid pricing, the estimated cost of the chloride in class five will be covered in the forty thousand dollar budget. City staff recommends city council approve the proposed gravel roads for class five resurfacing in twenty twenty-three. And we will be taking bids for the material, so, uh, once we do that, we'll know what our costs are, and, uh, if we have any leftover, we may be able to get a street that may be scheduled for next year, if it's a short distance.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposed gravel roads for class five resurfacing in twenty twenty-three as indicated on the map in our packet.
Motion made, is there a second? I'll second. Motion made second, discussion. Jack at Durant, and that goes right up to the, say any border then?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other discussions?
Um, I just have a question, Jack, with, uh, two hundred and forty-fifth, I believe it was, that was a border road between East Bethel and Athens, and it was discovered to be misaligned.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other gravel roads in East Bethel that would happen to be misaligned, that may need to be addressed?
Not that I'm aware of, now, two hundred and forty-fifth east of Highway sixty-five, going out by Simstone is the White Cemetery, that's also a border road with Athens. But there doesn't seem to be the problem with that two forty-fifth alignment as there was with the one coming off University Avenue, the one that we participated with them in that project about three years ago.
Yep. Alright, just that I'd ask.
Any other discussion? So the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Um, item G one, set date for Springtown Hall meeting.
Springtown Hall meeting is generally held in April and is proposed for a date that doesn't conflict with any other municipal or school district meetings. Staff has reviewed and found there's to be no conflicts with the evening meeting scheduled for ISD fifteen, ISD eight thirty-one, or any East Bethel commission or committee in April twenty twenty-three for the dates listed below. The dates listed below, there are eight dates that we could have the town hall meeting. An approval of this date will enable staff to set the calendar for the East Bethel Springtown Hall meeting and place this information in the spring edition of the newsletter, which is scheduled to be distributed March thirteenth through seventeenth. Staff is requesting city council set a date for the twenty twenty-three Springtown Hall meeting with one of the dates listed above.
Well, I would kind of be interested in the.
What? Should we make a motion first, Brad?
Uh, can we discuss before?
No, you need to make a motion first, but you can put in your motion the date.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve, uh, April twenty-sixth or April twenty-seventh as one of those dates to be selected upon discussion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Uh, my, my thought behind this was it's gonna be later in the month, hopefully the weather is warmer. And hopefully with that warmer weather, people will be enthralled to come out to a city meeting.
Good, good thinking.
So which, uh, which, which date do you want?
It doesn't matter to me, it's.
I'm good on either date, so. Anybody else? Kevin, you.
Flip a coin?
Pick a date, doesn't matter.
Just do it twenty-sixth, middle of the week then.
Okay, the twenty-sixth it is. So we have a town hall meeting for April twenty-sixth, and the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Item number two, joint law enforcement council discussion.
Before I begin the staff report, I'd like to introduce a guest we have tonight, Mr. Brad Johnson, our new county attorney, is present, thank you Brad for being here. Brad's here to act as a resource or give any information that the council needs regarding the joint law enforcement council. Uh, what precipitated this was at the request of Commissioner Julie Brassstead. Mayor Harrington and the city administrator met with her on February seventh to hear her presentation of concerns with the joint law enforcement council. The Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council was created in nineteen seventy to deal with countywide law enforcement problems which are of regional in nature. Members who serve on the council include the Anoka County law enforcement officers, two county commissioners, an elected official from each city with the police department, and two elected officials representing the eight Anoka County cities that contract with the sheriff's office. Mr. Brassstead raised issues regarding the joint law enforcement commission that relate to ensuring that every city in the county has representation in the group, use of funds are in accordance with the purpose of the joint law enforcement commission and provide countywide benefits, and brought up the issue of the extension of the joint law enforcement council public safety levy, which is set to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The public safety levy has been utilized only twice since the creation of the joint law enforcement council. The first was to upgrade the first responder radios countywide to the eight hundred megahertz system. The second was to fund the countywide public safety data systems. Both times, every city, township, and the county unanimously supported these projects. Triggering Commissioner Brassstead's concern was the project proposed after the civil unrest resulting from the twenty twenty Minneapolis riots to purchase fencing and barriers for use at city halls and police stations around the county as security for these types of incidents. However, there seems to be varying opinion that this type of project does not seem to serve or benefit all of our cities or township. This security issue seems to be more of a concern with the larger cities that border Hennepin County than with the northern municipalities in Anoka County. The joint law enforcement commission at council has requested to amend their bylaws to require unanimous vote of support if the public safety levy were to be used for future projects. That request failed, and the amendment to the bylaws is only to require a super majority, or sixty-six percent of the vote. Commissioner Brassstead recommended if there were a few cities that wanted to do a joint project that had no countywide benefit, that those cities could enter into a joint powers agreement with the others instead of approving a countywide levy that requires all taxpayers to pay for what in some cases could be considered essentially a local project. Another major concern with the joint law enforcement council is the current voting structure of the organization. As stated above, all cities that have a police department are voting members. And this includes the smaller cities of Saint Francis and the cities composing the Centennial Lakes Police Department. Of the eight cities that contract services through the sheriff's office, only two are represented to vote on the joint law enforcement council public safety levy decisions. This presents problems and disparity with representation on the joint law enforcement council, and seems to possibly create an environment that could pit, pit police departments against the sheriff's office contract service cities when it comes to local versus countywide projects. Commissioner Brassstead is requesting we discuss the joint law enforcement council issues, and if there's concurrence with her concern, request that the East Bethel City Council pass a resolution to address this matter. Staff has spoken with Anoka County Sheriff Brad Wise, and he would like to address the council regarding this matter. Sheriff Wise will be present at our next meeting on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and provide a report of the joint law enforcement council along with our meet the deputies night. As the joint law enforcement council is currently lobbying the legislature to renew the public safety levy for Anoka County, council may wish to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three or modification thereof at our meeting on February thirteenth, or at the latest on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Discussion.
Well, I would definitely agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Brassstead. That if this is a tax that the entire, that's on the entire county, the entire county puts into this pool of funds, that A, every city should have representation. And number two, it should show benefits to each city.
Jack, what was that contract, she said eight million dollars?
That's correct, the eight million dollars is for the public safety data system that they had the levy on. That's correct, the eight million dollars is for the public safety data system that they had the levy on back in, what, two thousand and fifteen? So, I don't know if there's a, a, a cap limit that they're wanting to do, the extension of this public lev, public safety levy, if it's open to determine what projects are. But as I understand it, the last levy on this was eight million dollars for the public safety data system.
Yeah, I agree with, with Brian, when we talked about too, if a certain city wanted a project, they could do their own joint powers with, with, you know, Anoka County or something like that, but don't, you know, just don't throw...
It, it, I, I related a little bit of my conversation with Sheriff Wise, too. He did say that, uh, going forward, that proposal to buy these safety fences and barricades, uh, was, has probably been dropped. Uh, but the problem that, that we talked about and we saw is, you know, number one, where they're gonna be placed. And number two, when something happens, usually it's too late, everything's already happened by the time you can disperse items like that to get them to the scene. But according to Sheriff Wise, he said that proposal is no longer in his mind being considered. But I think the, 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 the point is that, you know, I think what concerned us was the representation on the council and the fact that East Bethel is bigger than Saint Francis, Lexington, Circle Pines, and Centerville, yet they have a vote and we don't. I mean, there's two votes on the contracted cities. Those two cities that are on that board now are Andover and Ham Lake, those do rotate. Uh, but, uh, that still leaves six that don't have any real say in the matter.
Yeah, if you go by size, East Bethel is the biggest in the county, so.
Yeah, as far as land, there it goes.
Yeah. So yeah, I, I would definitely be interested in, because before this report, I... I knew that there was a commission, 'cause I remember the, the development of the, uh... of the, uh, upgrading the radios. But I had, I didn't know that we could have an option for representation, that this was a countywide supported by cities. And that... Yeah, if this money is gonna be spent, it should, any project should benefit every county or every city and township in the city. And there should be, I don't know what their vetting process is for the projects if they do have to show benefit to each city or not, actual true benefit.
Well, and I think that's why this other, this particular project raised that question. Because to some, it seemed more like a local project rather than a regional project, it benefited every city in the county. The other two uses of that levy did provide countywide benefit to every department in every city township within our county boundaries.
Yep.
So, I think that's kind of the, the crux of the matter, that there are some concerns are, it's brought to our attention. Uh, we do have a resolution, like I say, the sheriff would like to speak to this too at our meeting on the twenty-seventh. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Johnson has any comments he'd like to add, but we'd certainly welcome those at this time.
May it please the council, my name is Brad Johnson, I'm your county attorney here in Anoka County, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I think it might be helpful to just see a little bit or hear a little bit about kind of how the joint law enforcement council is organized. I would point out that this council has been in existence for over fifty years. And it is a joint law enforcement council, it's not a joint cities council. And the representation, um, on the council includes some law enforcement agencies that serve multiple areas, including the sheriff and then also including, um, uh, Centennial Lakes, where there are multiple cities that are included but with one, um, representative that covers each of the cities. So, if I might just read from, um, the actual joint powers agreement under, uh, paragraph four from the council, it says, "The parties agree to participate in a council called the Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council, whose membership would be constituted by appointment on an annual basis by each of the participating governmental units of their chief of police, together with one other individual to be appointed by the city council." So let me just break there for a second. It's every city where there's a chief of police plus a council member as one group. Uh, provided however, that if a participating governmental unit contracts with the Anoka County Sheriff or other law enforcement agencies for police services, it shall be represented by the Anoka County Sheriff or the chief of police for the contract law enforcement agency, if there is a contract law enforcement agency that's there. Provided... Provided further however, that the cities of Centerville, Circle Pines, and Lexington, and the Circle Pines, Lexington, Centerville Joint Municipal Police Commission shall be represented by their chief of police and the chairman of the joint municipal commission. So even though there are multiple cities there, there is only one elected that would join with the chief of police on that. And that the county would be represented by the sheriff, the county attorney, and four individuals appointed by the county board of commissioners, two of whom shall be county commissioners, and two of whom shall be appointed, uh, shall be appointed upon the recommendation of the Anoka County Sheriff. So the way that it works is that cities with police departments have a chief of police and one elected. And the county has the county sheriff, the county attorney, two county commissioners, and two other designees of the sheriff that are then nominated by the sheriff and appointed by the county board. That was designed as a part of the joint law enforcement council to create proportionality. Uh, and so, whereas one city has two voting members, the county has six voting members. These, and, and by the way, it is the sheriff that makes the nomination. So the sheriff then decides who among the member cities that are there might in any given year serve. So, last year, it was Andover and Oak Grove, and this year, it was Andover and Ham Lake. City of East Bethel could appeal to the sheriff and make a claim to say, hey, on another year down the road, I'd like to be there. I would also say that all the meetings of the, um, joint law enforcement council are public meetings. They're posted, um, public meetings. And it just so happens that the county board appointed two commissioners that include Commissioner Sholty, who was last year's chair of the county board, um, and represents an area that includes Coon Rapids and Anoka, and also, uh, Commissioner Brassstead, who as you know is, is your commissioner. So that's how the representation is made up on the joint law enforcement council. I can also further address, um, uh, any questions you have related to the public safety levy and how that might work. So I think there, it sounded like from the conversation, there was a little misapprehension about a tax without representation. Is that what I kind of felt or heard?
I think it's tax without representation, but also tax without benefit.
Okay, couple of things on that.
You know, if you, if you don't get anything for your tax money, what's, what's the point?
If I might just address that on a, on a couple of bases, let's talk about the representation component first. All that the joint law enforcement council is requesting is a renewal of a levy authority.
Right.
Not a renewal of an actual levy. So the thing that's important to understand there is that the levy authority is actually the county.
And we're supporting, with the resolution, we're supporting approval with the condition.
With which condition?
It's right behind you.
And so I can't, I can't read behind, so...
You don't have eyes in the back, you have it?
Yeah, I wish I did.
I thought all attorneys had eyes in the back.
Right. And this hasn't, this hasn't been shown to me, so...
Yeah, no, that's, it's, it's basically with the condition that there be, uh, I'll, I'll read it, I got it in front of me. It's basically, or, do you wanna, excuse me, I don't wanna...
I don't, I don't think, and I'm, I'm not speaking for the council, and if I'm, if I'm speaking contrary to your opinion, let me know. I don't think there's any basic oppositions of the levy per se. But it's the matter of how it gets voted on and how these projects are decided on.
Right.
And, and what, what we understand too is if this levy goes away and a project comes up that's gonna be beneficial to all twenty-one municipalities in Anoka County, it's very difficult to get this reinstated in a timely manner.
Right, and, and there are currently two projects that have been a topic of conversation, so let's talk about the specific projects for just a moment. One of them is the anticipated approximately eight hundred to eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars of updates and maintenance to the public safety data system. So that is one thing that the levy funds could be used for in the future. Otherwise, basically, it's gonna have to be worked into the sheriff's contracts, or it's gonna have to be worked into city budgets. Okay? Then, uh, with respect to the other project, there's been a conversation about critical infrastructure and what does that mean? So currently, um, there is a concern among many of the cities in Anoka County through their police chiefs. And also, I think the sheriff would like to speak to you about some of this. And I, I would say with all due respect to Mr. Davis, and I don't wanna speak for the sheriff at all, um, but, uh, it is still an ongoing conversation about the need for the protection of critical infrastructure among the joint law enforcement council. So there, just as there can be on a, a city council, there can be differences of opinion on a joint law enforcement council as well. Um, we've seen instances in our communities in the last several years, like you go back to the George Floyd incident and the civil unrest that took place in, um, in the third precinct. Um, I'm quite acquainted with that, uh, because I was close to that in many respects. I have family that lived there, and I also, for a period of time, was a Hennepin County prosecutor, so I, I saw the aftermath of that. Then you have the civil unrest that took place at the Brooklyn Center Police Department, where the Brooklyn Center Police Department virtually, almost got overrun. That same dynamic could exist at your sheriff's office, very clearly could exist there. Um, then you have the civil unrest that surrounded what some would refer to as the Kim Potter Incident, the Kim Potter Dante Wright Incident, and some civil unrest that happened in various places and also homes that were a point of concern and neighborhoods that were a point of concern. So that went out into communities where officers lived. And then you have civil unrest that followed some of the other things, well, and, and even followed certain elected members into where they live. Some might recall some civil unrest at, at various places. And I don't know if the city of East Bethel has passed a targeted picketing ordinance. Have you all addressed that yet?
No.
Many of the other, uh, neighborhood cities, because they are neighboring cities, because they have police officers and sheriff's deputies and other elected officials that live in their communities, passed targeted picketing ordinances, and the purpose is to deal with civil unrest should it arise in a neighborhood. And there has been conversation at the joint law enforcement council level about what could the fencing and barriers be used for? They could be used to protect any of your neighboring communities, it could be used to protect this community, they could be used to protect your sheriff's office, they could be used to protect the government center. Those are shared expenses. And the reason that the joint law enforcement council exists is because, and frankly, I would respectfully say it's kind of a crown jewel of Anoka County. The surrounding counties are extraordinarily, um, complimentary and somewhat even jealous about how well we work here in Anoka County. But it's because it, we're good neighbors, and we understand that if that stuff happens, we have to respond. And we also have to respond with mutual aid and the ability to work together. Now, every contribution that is made in, in the joint law enforcement council is made on a calls-for-service basis. And so, uh, the highest contributing, uh, member to the calls-for-service is the city of Coon Rapids. There are more calls-for-service in the city of Coon Rapids, Coon Rapids pays the largest share. The next would be, uh, it, it toggles between, uh, the county and the city of Blaine uh, because of their size and their population and the, the reach of, of them. And then it steps down from, from there on. You all have been participating in the same formulas that apply to the Fire Protection Council and the Joint Law Enforcement Council for many, many years, but your representation has been through the sheriff, two commissioners, designated appointees who are there to, to represent not only their cities, but also the county interests and your county attorney. So you have representation there. I would also say that what the joint law enforcement council is asking for is for the levy authority to be renewed, but it will always be the county board that will make the final determination on whether a levy should be granted. So a, you have representation at that level too, because it's the same representation that you have on any taxing that's done in Anoka County, including your own county commissioner. Um, it would just be a separate line item, uh, if it were to pass at a county board level, it would be a separate line item, uh, called a public safety levy, as it has been for the last decade. I would also finally say, and, and, if I, if I just might, uh, Councilmember Lewis, I would also finally say that, um, uh, the original levy that was requested by Anoka County when they went to the legislature was for a twenty-year period of time. It was through that kind of haggling at the legislature that Anoka County agreed to compromise to get it passed to have it be a ten-year period of time. And here are the joint law enforcement councils saying we have more to do. So...
Okay, I just want, I wanted to ask one quick question.
Yeah, please.
Is it, what is, is there any problem with or real opposition to what we're proposing to resolve here?
In terms of adding additional cities to, to the joint law enforcement council?
We support, we supported that it should be conditioned on the amendment of JLEC bylaws to provide equal representation for all municipalities in Anoka County for votes on JLEC projects. What's, is there any problem with that?
Well, I think what is, what the concern is, is that, that that would then give the county representation on the joint law enforcement council, where it's already six county members as opposed to any other cities given two county members, it would then outsize that in, in a way in which it would essentially become a veto. And that is the concern. And, and this whole notion of a unanimous vote in order to recommend an expenditure of some... The only unanimous vote that I'm aware of in the United States is a jury in a criminal case. You all don't work on a unanimous vote basis. When you spend tax dollars, you work on a majority basis. Now, the joint law enforcement council, though, listened to a couple of the county representatives and said, you know what? It's okay for us to recommend a super majority on things like this. If we're gonna really ask to spend public safety levy money, then let's do a two-thirds super majority. And so that was something that was agreed to by the joint law enforcement council and passed as a, as a matter of its rules. I think if voice were all that were a concern and so that the voting didn't get outsized, one of the things the joint law enforcement council and member, uh, organizations, and they all have to speak for themselves, but might, uh, consider is having essentially, uh, non-voting members so that people had a seat at the table and could come. But the, the concern would be that the county already has six votes or six county representatives at the table as to any cities, two. Um, and, you know, it's, it's kind of like... And, you know, it's, it's kind of like, there are even parts of the community that, that aren't represented, like the City of Hilltop is not represented at the Joint Law Enforcement Council, um, directly anyway. And then the member cities in the Centennial Lakes area are, are not individually represented there. They just send one person. So, I mean, we could add all of those too, but the recommendation, I think, from Joint Law Enforcement Council is, is that if anybody wants to have a voice in that, that's why you have county commissioners and that's why you have a county attorney and that's why you have a sheriff. And that's why, um, you have, uh, multiple opportunities to exercise that voice. Frankly, it could even appeal to the sheriff to, to be one of the member cities in any given year.
Now, we understand and respect that, but sometimes county commissioners and sheriffs have, are tugged in several different directions. We're only tugged in one direction. That's why I think we thought it might be important to have our own representation on the board. And you say, "Okay, there's ten cities, but they've got two votes, correct?"
Uh, there's more than ten cities.
Well, when, when you take, when you take Lexington Circle Pines and Centerville, then that takes it down from thirteen to ten, I believe.
Yeah, it, it might. I'd, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers.
Ten, ten or eleven, what, what, whatever.
Give or take, give or take.
So that's twenty or twenty-two votes, and the county has six. So what happens if the cities outvote the county? Then the county, you said, in the end, though, can just totally regard that and make whatever decision they feel is necessary, is that correct?
Kind of, uh, so, let's, are you talking specifically about the public safety levy?
Yes.
Okay. So City Administrator Davis, um, in the public safety levy, let's say for example that seventy percent of the Joint Law Enforcement Council said, "We would like to spend the public safety levy money," um, or "We would like to levy for a particular project." Let's say it's a critical infrastructure project, okay? In order to spend that money, seventy percent of the Joint Law Enforcement Council would have to agree that that's a proper expenditure. And so what you would do is present the issue to the county board and say, "We have the votes to do this project. We would like you to levy for it." It is then the county board that decides independently as to whether or not it wants to levy. So those seven commissioners can decide yes or no on, on that. So we can make recommendations on what to levy for. If the county board passes that, then likely the money would be spent for that purpose because it was specifically levied for that. And, and the county board would have passed their resolution and their taxing authority to, to do that. Does that make sense? Follow that, so. Does that help answer your, your question, City Administrator Davis, so?
To some degree.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm still not certain that, you know, we may have a situation at some point where we're pitting city police departments against county contracted cities, depending on what it is, because we're actually talking about two different demographics for both groups. Most of the contracted cities, or really all of them, are northern Anoka County municipalities who may have a different set of goals or visions on what's appropriate public expenditure of these funds. While some of the, those police departments, and I'll leave St. Francis out of this, uh, may have different views on what it's to be spent for. You know, one thing I can see, I've heard talk that there's a need for a new call center, that the current call center is operating out of the basement of the government center and it's cramped and got no space, you know? To, to me, that would be an appropriate use of these funds. Just things that don't particularly benefit us or some of the other, most of the cities, then I can see where that's a, a real problem.
And you have a voice in that process through your county commissioner.
Yeah, and I, I, I understand that and, and respect it, but I think probably from what I'm seeing and feeling and have heard over the years, we would probably rather have a voice through our own representative. I don't know if that's possible or not, but that's just something that we thought here. Again, I don't think that we're saying that we're not in favor of extending that levy. It's just that we'd like maybe a little more representation in the decision that's made on the selection of projects.
And I, I see those things as potentially two separate issues. So why would they need to be tied together in a resolution?
Because that's the only way we have any teeth in this. That's our only leverage.
Okay.
And it was the county, the county, excuse me, was the county commissioner who recommended this too, right?
Yep.
I mean, so that's, we're listening to her.
She's representing us.
Sure, sure.
And, and we're, we're not here to give you a hard time.
No.
I'm glad you came because you've answered a lot of questions for us. I really appreciate your presence and your presentation.
Giving us a lot of information, yeah.
You know, I guess, I guess when, especially when you look at the critical infrastructure project, knowing that, that your sheriff's deputies would be the ones that would be standing in the gap. And if there is not, the, the stuff that we, as a Joint Law Enforcement Council, have determined that there is a need for here, it is those sheriff's deputies that are standing in the gap without the assets that potentially some of them need to protect things like their sheriff's department, the courthouse, and others may, I mean, there may be legitimate disagreements that individuals, whether they be local law enforcement, for example, the city police chief in the City of Anoka, where the government center is, or the sheriff, or the county attorney, or county commissioners. There may be legitimate disagreements on that. But without having those assets at our ready in Anoka County, if other events that have happened recently happen in Anoka County, then we don't have them, and it leaves it to a city to then, any one city, including this city or others, to then try to contract to get them on an expedited basis at what has been shown to us to be prohibitively high, um, numbers. And the only thing you can do to backfill that is to send deputies into the gap. So that's why it's become an important topic of conversation at the Joint Law Enforcement Council. But I will, I will defer to you all on, on further discussion. If there's any further questions I have either here or after the meeting, I'm happy to stay by and, and respond to those. And I, I think it might be helpful for you two to, to hear from your sheriff as well. Any other questions that you might have?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on the resolution?
Uh, we'll wait until the next meeting after we talk to the sheriff about this, just so we have...
Want to table it then?
I'll make a motion to table until...
I think that would be wise.
Your second?
I'll second it.
Motion made second, discussion. All's in favor of table, say aye.
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 Opposed, we'll table it. Item G three, it's a sixty-five corridor improvement letter for, on support.
Thank you. Fine, in front of you, there's two letters. We just got these today. It's asking for support for projects that are being developed now to improve Highway sixty-five, specifically in Blaine with the raised grant application in corridors of commerce then from six ninety-four up to, to Bunker Lake Boulevard. The city's a member of this North Trunk Highway sixty-five coalition. It's one thing that we've identified early on in the process about solving any problems on Highway sixty-five congestion begins at Blaine. And the commit, the corridor coalition is very supportive of this. Uh, Anoka County is working to get grant money. Uh, they've got quite a bit secured, but they need north of about, over a hundred million dollars to make this happen. These are two programs that they're trying to get some more money from, and they're requesting our letter of support. This is no commitment to us on any funds or any other obligations to this. It just shows our support of their project. And it also plays into our long-range goals of solving congestion on sixty-five. And also, once this is done, some of our grandchildren may see the priorities shifted up to Viking Boulevard. So, uh, I'm just asking that we can approve these two letters of support for these two grant projects for Mendat and Anoka County Highway Department.
Make motion to approve the two letters of support that are currently in front of council for the Highway sixty-five corridor improvements.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Do the motion all's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, it passes. Item number nine, staff reports, Jack.
My only report, and we'll be mentioning this for the next couple of months, but anybody that wishes to appeal their tax classification or their tax valuation, we only have one opportunity to do that. That's on April the twenty-fourth at their, our local Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting. So if you're getting, you'll be getting your tax statement here fairly soon. If you want to appeal that valuation or the classification of your property, this is the meeting to come because the city council can actually make adjustments at this meeting. So put that on your calendar and...
Well, they can also get a hold of Mr. Tolman, Tool, before, prior.
Generally, when, when there's issues, we get notified ahead of time, and most of them are worked out with the assessor. If they're not worked out with the assessor to their satisfaction, then they come here and appeal that assessment on their property.
Okay.
And Jack, what time is that meeting?
It will be at five-thirty, I believe, because it's gonna be prior to the city council meeting.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's all you got, Jim?
Got a couple things here. January twenty-eighth, the fire department had their breakfast thing, and, uh, I wasn't able to make it, but I heard it was a great turnout. I don't wanna thank the fire department before that. And plus, uh, Brad at Route sixty-five donated the food and stuff, I understand, so I wanna thank him as well. And then also, I wanna address the council. As far as like, uh, had a public forum thing that's been brought up many times with Gail Murphy and other people, that there's issues that the city's working on or sending letters out or whatever, I'd like to take that on myself so we can get this stuff cleared out. It's been going on for years, causing the taxpayers a lot of money. Let's get it closed out. With your permission, I'll take care of that.
I think...
Yes, no?
I think that should be handled at staff level.
Staff's not taking care of it, so I will. No, no, what?
No, it should be handled by staff. If you want to be involved with the staff, you can be.
Okay, then I need the documents from the staff and the attorney. I'll meet with the homeowners myself too. We need to close this stuff out, it's ridiculous.
You cannot meet with the homeowners yourself.
Oh, really, why?
Staff needs to be involved.
Staff is involved, and it's not getting closed out.
Yeah, this, that's not the appropriate...
Oh, really? How is that?
Well, this, this is in the court system, Jack, so let's...
No, uh...
It's not.
Mrs. Murphy was given until the seventeenth to respond to our request to work with her. It wasn't to meet with me, it was to come and get her permits, very simple. If she gets her permits and gets somebody to sign off on them and say the work is fine, then we're good with that. Just get your permits like everybody else does, get the work signed off on by a licensed contractor and a licensed building official, we're good to go.
It's not just Mrs. Murphy, it's a bunch of other people too, that there's issues in the city?
And...
How many is there?
Well, we've got probably currently four or five outstanding code cases that are in various stages of the process. Actually, one, two, at least two of them are in court now, and another one's getting ready to go to court. So, uh, it's a process we have to follow based on what our ordinances are and how we handle code enforcement.
Because, uh, the way I see it, it's been taken for many years, and the taxpayers are paying a lot of money, and it's not getting resolved.
Well, the, 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 the one that you just mentioned, this time, once citations are issued, if they're not complied with, then this one goes to court too.
You also have your Board of Appeals, Jack. The, the, the individual or the resident who is cited for a violation or receives a letter has a ten-day window to appeal to a board as well.
They, they...
She has, and she's not held back on her appeal.
They, they can request an administrative hearing and...
Boy, this is one of those situations that begs for a special master, you know? Just somebody who can come in and just sort it out, and then a third party, you know?
Well, I mean, you, you, you all direct us on what you want, on what you want...
I wish there was a, a person I could find. I couldn't talk that judge into doing it, they're retired appeal court judge. Couldn't talk him into it, so that, that didn't work.
So in, in this case, and in, in relation to earlier comments about Mrs. Murphy had done all the things with her septic system, she didn't do what she was supposed to do. What she gave was, was a pumping report. This has to be a septic system compliance report that's based on what the MPCA says. That's the first thing she can do before she can get permits. So, uh, we've been trying to work with her. We've extended schedules due to her claims of not being available. We've been over backwards with her. We've gone the extra mile in trying to work with Ms. Murphy on this matter. And have gotten no results, so that's why I sent the notice to council that the seventeenth, we would start the process of the citation issue, which is the, either first part of her coming into compliance or she doesn't do that after the third citation, we can turn it over to the prosecutor for a resolution in the court system.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd still like to be involved with it.
No, it's not.
Get this thing moving, it's been years, so.
If you wanna drop by or not? If, well, if you wanna drop by, I'll, I'll show you what we've done and what, what we've got.
Right.
Just let me know.
There's two sides to every story, though, and I wanna know both sides.
Well, you can cer- certainly drop by, and we'll certainly provide you with our side, so...
Because it's costing the taxpayers a lot of money, and we don't wanna do that. That's it.
That's it. Mr. Miller?
I've been with Jack a few times this week. We're gonna be looking at, or I'm gonna be looking at, uh, requests from the residents to change a few of these ordinances regarding chickens, horses, something like that. So if we can get that somewhere on the agenda.
Hey, Tim, can you talk into your mic?
I'm sorry, so if we could do that coming up, uh, to get that either on the work schedule or the next meeting so we can expedite that. Spring is gonna be coming right around the corner. I wanna take a look at some of this stuff and, you know...
As, as we discussed earlier this evening, we will at least get something on the next agenda to begin that discussion and see what the next steps are in making a revision to that ordinance.
Thank you.
That's it. Kevin?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Mundell?
Uh, I don't have, there wasn't any meetings, so there's no reports. But I would like to thank the fire department for, again, putting on the, their breakfast that was had. I was there, lots of people were there, uh, some of the other council members were there, and a lot of the community came out. And that's where, I, I think an event like this, especially in the winter, is so important just to get people out of their houses and see their neighbors and have a good meal and, uh, it, it's, it's a great thing that the fire department does, and I'd really like to thank them for that.
And also recognize Brad of Route sixty-five for donating all the food.
Of course.
And his preparation.
Yep.
That was pretty righteous.
Route sixty-five always does a fantastic job. And he not only does the, uh, fire department, but he is all there at Booster Park, Booster Day, doing his a lot of involvement with that and a couple of other community events. He's always very, very involved and very generous.
And I'd just like to add, Brad, uh, volunteered here... And I'd just like to add, Brian, that Brad volunteered his half of the portion of pay back to the auxiliary. So that was a big thing, you know, so these gals can go out and buy a piece of equipment for each of the firefighters. You know, years past, they bought gloves or lights, but, you know, it's a really good thing that Brad did that, so...
Yep.
That it?
That's all I got.
Yeah, I just want to thank them too, the fire department. We have three hundred and ten people, so that was a good turnout. And I just want to thank everybody again. And then, we had a sunrise meeting for February second. We passed two budgets. We have one city that's looking at dropping out Ham Lake, so we had to pass a budget with them and one without them. So, until Ham Lake makes a decision on March first, there'll be two budgets and then we'll get it down to one when we get an answer from Ham Lake and then you guys will get the numbers. So, if Ham Lake drops out, it's probably gonna be closed to another two thousand dollars in East Bethel. Cost is two thousand dollars more, so just a little heads up.
Was Ham Lake at that meeting?
Uh, Ham Lake hasn't been to a meeting and I don't know when. We've asked and asked and asked and, you know, they said there's nothing for us in the sunrise. Well, they got over a hundred, hundred and some houses on the southwest end of the lake and they feel they're not getting anything done for Coon Lake. Well, everything you do for Coon Lake is good for the whole lake, so... But we're supposed to have a meeting with them March first and hopefully they're in or out or we'll go from there, so... And with that, we've got one last thing to do. Motion to adjourn.
Make motion adjourn.
Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourn.